Everyone, welcome to City Council. Anyway, welcome to City Council briefing session. We are going to start out with an interview with Hannah Kitz, who has been nominated to the Park Board by the Mayor's Office. And this is our chance to hear a little bit from Ms. Kitz. And Hannah, if you could just introduce yourself, tell us a little bit about your connection to Spokane and why you're interested in being on the Park Board.
And spending some time to get to know people who are interested in serving on the Park Board. My name is Hannah Kitz, and I am an associate at Lukens and Anis in Spokane. I moved to Spokane in 2016 for law school at Gonzaga. And after graduating, I knew that I wanted to stay and be a part of the community. I'm really interested in being on the community first because I'm service-oriented. And during my time at Gonzaga, I was able to embrace that and have a lot of different ways to be involved. But ever since I started working, my schedule has been a little bit inundated with just trying to figure out how to be an attorney and learning how to do business and real estate contracts. And I haven't really had time to invest like I wanted to. But during the pandemic and the shutdown, I had time to reconsider and evaluate just how everything was going in my life. And I really noticed that absence of being able to serve and be a part of a team that's serving. And I know that the Park Board is very integral to the way that the city functions as far as how land use decisions are made. And that is something that fits really well with my specific skill set. So I'm looking forward to learning about what the Park Board is doing on a day-to-day basis and how I can get involved and how I can help. That's pretty general overview. But if there's some specific questions about anything I said, I'd be happy to address those.
Council members, questions for Hannah? Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, really just curious. You mentioned that you moved here in 2016. Kind of where you came from? And also, what part of town you currently?
I came from Denver, Colorado. I grew up in a small farming community out there. And I ended up going to school for my undergraduate in Boulder, Colorado. And right now, I'm in Spokane. I live up kind of in the Five Mile area. So I bought a house up there with my husband. I think it was maybe the beginning of 2018. And we love it. We love where we're at. And I'm just so happy to have a community like this because I wasn't expecting to like Spokane so much.
So Hannah?
Go ahead.
Coming from where you came from into Spokane, how do our parks currently compare to the parks we've had experienced before?
That's a good question. So I don't know if anybody has had the chance to go to Boulder, Colorado. But it's a beautiful place. And they're very environmentally focused. Actually, before Boulder was developed, the city bought a ring of property around where the town is and are not letting anybody develop it. So there's so much just growth in Colorado. And their cities just expanding and expanding. But as you drive into Boulder, it's this beautiful, like, open space area around these mountains. And I just love how that is, you know, really well-defined. And they're very, they make sure that every different resource that the city offers is focused on how to preserve resources and energy and make it a clean and safe space. I've noticed that the parks here do very similar things. When I was talking to the, I think it was Jerry in my interview, she was explaining about how the water usage in Spokane is very regulated. And they are taking a lot of steps to make sure that things stay clean and not only like clean aesthetically, but just clean for the environment and something that, you know, promotes this environment for a long time. And I really, really value that. Just personally, my husband and I always walk up to Loma Vista Park. That's the one closest to our house. And especially during the pandemic, when we were working at home, we'd walk up there and play frisbee all the time. And it was so sad when all of the park playgrounds were wrapped up in the caution tape. And so it's nice to see things are opening back up again. And I know that the state, like, the parks are really safe space for our community. And I like that about Spokane.
Thank you for bringing your enthusiasm.
Thank you for the question.
All right. Any other questions? Not seen any. Hannah, thanks so much for attending today and for agreeing to serve. You don't need to appear. We'll briefly vote on your nomination shortly. But you don't need to be here for that. And we'll let you know. Thank you for your service in advance. Take care.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Take care.
All right. And with that, we can go to the briefing for the advanced agenda for next Monday.
Would you like me to call Ruhl first?
But actually, I would like the court clerk to call the Ruhl.
Council President Beggs.
Here.
Councilmember Burke.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Here.
Councilmember Mumm.
No, she's not here.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Here.
Thank you. Let the record reflect that Councilmember Mumm is absent.
All right. Now, Mr. Ormsby, if you'd like to take up the advanced agenda.
Thank you, Council President and members of the council. Firstly, October 26th meeting, we have on reports, contracts, and claims, the first two items relate to setting public hearings for the 2021 proposed budget. And Paul and Josie, our budget officer, is here to present those items.
Good afternoon, City Council. The first two items, as Mike just referenced, would set hearing dates for the citywide capital improvement program and then set hearing dates for the proposed budget.
Any questions? Thank you, Paul. Next, we've got the report of the mayor. First, it's for claims and payments, including parks and libraries, and then claims and payments excluding parks and library. And then also payroll claims. And those items will be completed prior to the meeting next week, as will the City Council minutes that the council will be asked to approve, will be included as well. Then, and I may ask Michelle to confirm this as we switch to the legislative agenda. The first is a special budget ordinance. And Michelle, is this one of the documents we should pull on the agenda?
The one for the 1.2 million for engineering, the SBO and the resolution that goes along with it should be pulled because they need to update the amount.
So is there a motion to?
Michelle?
So is there a motion to table indefinite?
Why don't we pass that over? Because I think that was one of the items, Council President, that was not presented in committee today because the dollar amount had changed.
Okay. So.
Can they not hear me?
Next, we go to resolutions and final ordinances.
So Michelle states.
The first resolution is for the construction, engineering, construction management department in that.
Mike? I don't know if you can hear us. But someone's trying to speak.
So Michelle was online. Are you, okay, Michelle, why don't you explain that before we continue?
Okay. So, sorry, thank you. So there was an SBO, sorry. There was an SBO for 1 million and a resolution for 1.2 million for a SIP loan. We need to pull those, as I did at the committee meeting today because they need to update the amount to, for the broader scope of the project, they need 1.5 million. So I will be coming up with a future with an SBO for 1.5 million and a SIP loan resolution for 1.5 million.
I guess my question, Michelle, is.
You're on mute.
My question, my question, Michelle, is, do you want us to just leave it on and then substitute those amounts? Or do you actually want us to take? It depends, I guess, how soon you're going to come back to us.
I can come back with actual documents by tomorrow.
All right. Then let's leave them on and we'll just substitute.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
DMN.
Back to you, Mike.
Okay, good. Next is, I think, based on the meeting today, Michelle, is a resolution for the interfund loan for SIP to be, to continue to be included. And if you could brief that, please.
Sure. Thank you. So this is for, you know that we went through the whole refinancing at the beginning of this, towards this year. And this usually, this would have been the current year's so draw on the four, five-year cycle of 2019 to 2024, where we were going to have a SIP loan every single year for those five years. We did the refinance, which refinanced all loans from 2014 to 2019 earlier this year. And we are now needing to make the 2020 draw because of the choice that was chosen on the refinance didn't lower the debt service in order to not have to borrow. So we need to borrow 2020 in order to cover this year's capital expenditures. And this is asking permission to draw those funds.
So my question was, I, my understanding was, under the SIP, Public Safety Vehicle Capital, that 2019 was the last year we were going to take out new loans. So that's, and that's my question of, is this, did we redo that? I mean, I don't know that that came back to council to change that.
I just read a memo that I think Tony is going to follow up with you on, that was a memo that came from your office. And that it still said in there that we still needed to draw 2020.
Yeah. So I think, and Tim kind of mentioned that a little bit, but I'm just trying to get clear in my mind, wasn't the original program that 2019 was the last year to do it? Is that?
When you say original pro, what do you mean when you say original program?
In the Condon administration, when they redid, when they went to this, they called it a program where they would use 1% of the property tax increase plus a match. And they would do that, and I thought they were going to do that, through 2019. And then they predicted that after 2019, the money, the annual contribution that was increasing over those several years of the 1% plus the match would be enough to fund it going forward. And so 2019 was supposed to be the last year, I think. But I'm not positive, but that's why I'm asking you, is what's your understanding of what that was originally intended to be? If you have one.
Okay. My understanding is that they did the first resolution. It was for a five-year, five-year round from 2014 to 2018. So 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, five loans. Then there was another that was going to be 2019, 2020, 21, 22, and 23, for another five. After that, I, my recollection is that it was going to be self-sustained after all the debt service was paid and after 2024. But we did have a second five-year round in there. And we, when we took the 2019 draw. Because we came forward, when Crystal was still here, we came forward with a resolution for $18 million in full for the five years. And we gave them all of their budget for those five years of funding at the beginning of 2020. And so, but they can only spend what they're getting in cash. And we haven't funded that loan this year. And so now they're getting to work purchasing capital and they don't have the cash.
Okay. Well, it sounds like we'll wait for that memo from Tim Donovan and revisit it. But thank you.
Next, and we're having some technical issues, so I'll apologize for that. Next, we have a proposed resolution from Councilmembers Kinnear and Stratton regarding an amendment to the Park Speed Zone Project.
I'm going to defer to Councilmember Stratton because this addition is in your, in your neck of the woods.
Thank you. Just real quickly, when we were working on this resolution, we had Audubon Park as a park part of the pilot project. And it turns out that there is a conflict in Audubon because it's a school zone. And Mike, Mike Ormsby is going to help me out if I get this confused. And they could do one or the other. They couldn't do both. And so I met with the leadership of the Audubon Downriver Neighborhood Council. And they decided that they wanted to stay as a school zone and keep the radar, the school radar camera on Northwest Boulevard. So from there, we had a request from the Emerson Garfield neighborhood because of the issues surrounding Corbin Park and speeding in that neighborhood, that Corbin Park be considered. So what we have done is we've taken Audubon Park out and replaced it with Corbin Park in the pilot project. Mike, did I get that right?
Yes.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, just a couple of things real quick. I'm wondering, and maybe Councilwoman Kinnear knows, if we've seen or if there's been any kind of performance data collected for the pilot to date. I know that was one of the things we had talked a little bit about when this first went into place. So just kind of curious about that. And then also, we had a formal request from the Shiloh Hills neighborhood asking for Friendship Park to be added to the pilot. And they, they had requested it early on, but they were just past the deadline when this originally was approved. And then they formally passed it as a recommendation by the neighborhood. And then, and then the last thing I would just mention, too, is, is the only other comment I've, I've seen, and it's not, not my district, but just regarding High Drive. And I would just, just kind of highlight that as well. So.
Sure. So I've been told by Streets, Mr. Harris, that they're going to start doing their measurements after the first of the year. And they'll measure what the impact for, let's just talk about High Drive for a minute, what the impact on surrounding arterios are. They'll measure High Drive. And then if there's increased traffic on Bernard, on Grand, on Lincoln, cutting through the neighborhood. So that will take place after the first of the year. I imagine the same thing will occur in the other areas of the city so that we can measure. But they're not planning to do that this year. They're planning to start it next year. High Drive, I continue to get pluses and minuses. The people who are using High Drive from outside the city want it to be fast. The people who are doing 25 to 30 miles an hour are still getting passed by people doing 40 and 50. So that hasn't changed. That's always been the case. People have never, you're either going to go to the speed limit or you're going to go way over the speed limit because it's fun. It's, it's curvy and it's downhill and it's like a roller coaster. So that has always been a problem. It continues to be a problem. People are still passing illegally. Always been a problem. The only way that's going to change is if we do some traffic calming measures along that corridor. Remember, it's a straight shot from the freeway to 29th. And then there's a three-way stop. And then from 29th all the way to Grand Avenue. So there's no, nothing to stop you. You just go. And that is an invitation to go fast. So we're going to have to do something differently regardless of the speed limit there. It's still not enticing people to slow down. So that's my, that's my short answer.
Is that, oh, Councilmember Wilkerson?
If it's possible to, oh, just to add, if it's possible to further amend this to include Friendship Park, I think that would be welcome. Thank you.
Did you, did they do a resolution?
They sent us an email with their, yeah, affirming that they voted to add, add this as a, as an addition.
Okay. So can you send that to me?
Yep, will do.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Thank you. I was going to ask for clarity also about adding Friendship Park. So there's a process to that.
I, yeah. I think we could entertain that maybe next Monday at 3:30. There, there are actually quite a few neighborhoods that have done resolutions for parks. So it's just, I don't see a reason why we can't add them. The Streets Department, you know, only has so many personnel resources to put up the signs. So as long as people don't mind waiting for them to have time to actually do it, but getting those on the list is probably a fine. So we could review those over the next week of the neighborhoods that are formally requested. Because I know there are more than one, so.
So, Council President Beggs.
Yes.
So my question is the lack of enforcement on High Drive. And if that is such an issue, what is our challenge around at least doing some targeted enforcement to kind of get the message across?
So.
Could I answer that?
Yes.
I've asked for, this is patrol up there. We got put on the waiting list. Council Presidents and I have been aware advocating for four additional traffic officers two years, three years ago. It's a blur. Two or three years ago. That did not happen. So left with still six traffic officers for the entire city. It's not enough. So if we want to do enforcement, we're going to need to be deliberate about hiring more traffic officers.
And just to clarify, we offered the money to do it. But the police department didn't take us up on it yet. I'm hopeful that over the next few months, we can continue to improve our relationship with the police department. And maybe we can get some progress on that. In the alternative on our legislative agenda, I believe it's already on it, or if not, we'll be talking about adding it, is to get authority to put speed radar cameras adjacent to parkland from the legislature. We currently don't have that authority to do that. But that would potentially be a good location for that, to do that. But we don't have that authority yet. But we're pursuing all options. Anything else on the 20 miles per hour? Okay.
Okay. And finally, Council President, you have a resolution identifying the City Council's budget priorities for the next fiscal year.
Yes. But before that, actually, Mr. Greenland is going to talk to us about the 55 watershed plan.
You're, you're absolutely right. I skipped ahead. Doug, sorry about that. Doug Greenland is here to present an amendment to the Little Spokane Water Resource Inventory Area.
Thank you, City Council. Am I coming through clear this time?
Yep.
Thank you. Yeah, I got a good computer, so I should sound better now. So the Grow Centville 6091, codified by RCW 9094, has this update the YR 55, the Little Spokane Watershed Plan, and have that approved plan to the Department of Ecology by February 1st, 2021. The plan has, the current plan is because we have an upstream flow in YR 55. So that is why it's part of the RCW 9094 process. RCW 9094 states, "Prior adoption of the updated watershed plan the Department, that's ecology, must determine that actions identified in the watershed plan after accounting for new projected uses of water over the subsequent 20 years will result in net ecological benefit to upstream resources within the Water Resource Inventory Area." And the previous plan for YR 55 and 57 was a joint plan that was adopted in 2006 by the City of Spokane, Spokane County, Pend Oreille, and Stevens County. The new plan adoption is subsequently to offset new projected uses of exempt wells over the required 20-year horizon, thus resulting in the net ecological benefit. The preparation of this planned addendum was completed through a collaborative effort of the initiating governments, which were Spokane County, Stevens County, Pend Oreille, the City of Spokane, and Whitworth Water District, as well as 25 other members of the planning unit. The planning began meeting in 2018 and finished to this report in July of this year. And I presented that first draft at City Council. You had some requests to include more awarding on water conservation. And they added that to the new plan. And the final plan was submitted in September of this year. The plan has a balance of, the proposed water offset plans give a net benefit of 1,908 acre feet per year after the 20-year planning horizon. There are also a number of sub, each sub-basin that has non-water offset projects that are proposed. You could like over removal projects and other fish habitat improvement projects that are being proposed by a number of organizations, such as the Spokane Conservation District, the Pend Oreille Conservation District, the Lands Council, the Indian Land Conservancy, the Spokane Tribe of Indians, and the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife. For the entire basin, each sub-basin was also evaluated in two of the sub-basins. Dedmon Creek and Pino, and Dartford Creek still had water deficits in spite of the overall basin having a net increase in water. The YR 55 is a plan that will consider it important to prioritize implementation of non-water habitat projects in these basins to offset the deficits. All of the offset projects included in this plan are considered realistic, consistent with project types, regularly funded by state and federal funding programs, and have a solid scientific foundation. Key agencies and stakeholders have experience in implementing projects. They've proposed offset projects for inclusion in the plan, including Spokane County, the Spokane Conservation District, the Pend Oreille Conservation District, the Lands Council, the Indian Northwest Land Conservancy, Spokane Tribe of Indians, and the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife. Spokane County has also has 283 acre feet in the Little Spokane Water Bank. And five applications were submitted for stream flow restoration grant program funding, which demonstrates a commitment to implementing the planned addendum. Water offset and non-water offset projects are distributed throughout YR 55, including the upper stream portions of the basin, which serve to provide more stream reaches of the watershed for stream flow benefits than projects lower in the basin. And the combined proposed offset projects provide benefits to approximately 150 miles of tributaries and stream flow. So the final report itself is currently 431 pages. And then each of the approving agencies will also, so it'll be longer after each of our approving processes are included in the final report.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, have all of the stakeholders, governmental entities that are involved in this approved the plan to date?
So I, I am aware that Whitworth has approved the plan. So the approval process is that the five initiating governments approve it, and that the, the planning committee members recommend for its approval, and of the all the participating agencies recommended approval, some of them with contingencies, because the Eloka Lake project is going to be evaluated for upstream flow. If you impound that much water and it gets warm, what does that impact going to be on the fish when you release it over the course of the summer? So they had some concerns about that project, but they all recommended its approval and passing along to ecology.
And if-
To my knowledge, only one other agency has approved it.
And if, and if one of them does not approve it, what, what is that, what happens then?
They need to have four of the five initiating the governments approve the plan.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Well, thanks for that comprehensive report, Doug.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon.
Thank you. Now, having jumped ahead earlier, now we're to Council President, your report on budget priorities, or the resolution for budget priorities.
Yeah, so where we are in the budget process is several weeks ago, I shared with the mayor and her finance team a list of various priorities that council members had forwarded to Tim Donovan, and we provided those in writing, and we explained it, and then we got the mayor's budget a couple of weeks ago, and most of those things were not really included meaningfully. They were, they did assure us that they had considered them carefully, but obviously, the city council is the one that sets the budget, so our finance committee, which is Councilmember Mum, and Councilmember Kinnear and I, we put this resolution together with many of those items that people had put on if we thought there was likely support for them. And so it's really just a bookend to the process, and we thought that since the informal sharing didn't get results, that we would put them to a vote, so they would know whether or not there were four votes for each of those things. So it's really kind of just part of the conversation process. We're going to talk about it at our council retreat on Friday, so we don't have to debate it right now, today, and get feedback on it if people want to make changes and things. And again, we just put in there what we thought people would like, so we're looking for feedback from council members on what it will look like next Monday, and of course, the public. Then after we pass whatever we pass, then the mayor will come to us with another budget version about a week later, and then we have until early December to make changes to that budget and see which of those changes we want to make. I met with the mayor this morning and offered to have our budget committee sit down with her and her team if they would like to do that, and she seemed interested in that, at least preliminarily. So we're just in the process. The one good thing I will say is that last year, because it was an election year and we didn't know who was going to be in office, we didn't really get started on this process till the end of November instead of the middle of October. So that's the briefing on that. Councilmember Cathcart?
Just looking through the, the list of items, I'm trying to get a sense of what the actual budget impact would be if all of those items are adopted. It looks like several million, but I, I can't quite get a number. Do we have an estimate on what the actual bottom line budget impact will be?
I think if you put all of it together, including the savings that is in there and the revenue, it'd be a net, we wouldn't have a deficit between revenues and, and expenses, but I don't know that we have that exact number yet, but I'm hoping by Friday, we'll have a good, a better sense of that.
And the, and the new revenue, is that just the additional fee for, for county sewer users?
There's that, and then there's several million dollars in savings from rate holidays, and then position eliminations, or deferrals, so, yeah. Other questions? Okay. All right, that's the end of legislative agenda, but first reading-
Thank you. Next, we move into first reading ordinances, and there are three proposed ordinances that relate to solid waste and recycling, and Marlene Feist from Utilities and Public Works is here to brief these three items.
Good afternoon, Council. So these are the, these three ordinances are the first of the rate setting ordinances that you're going to see on your agenda over the next few weeks. These are the three related to our solid waste system. So the first one is related to rates for solid waste disposal, and that includes a 2.9% increase to those rates for the next three years, so that's each of the years 2021, 2022, and 2023. That particular ordinance also includes a $2 transaction fee for self-haul loads to the waste-to-energy facility, which wouldn't be consistent with what the county charges at its transfer stations. The, the next ordinance is all of the solid waste collection rates for residential and commercial customers, also garbage, clean green, and recycling, depending on the, on the customers, and those also would be increased by 2.9% annually for the next three years. And then finally, the last ordinance is our response to how we're going to deal with rising recycling costs, which is to switch to an every other week recycling pickup schedule. So that is separately, so you'd vote on the schedule separately. So those are the three ordinances related to solid waste, and we'll have more next week that get on for water wastewater.
Any questions on that? Okay.
And next, Council President and council members, we move to hearings, and it's proposed to have two hearings next week. The first is on the final reading of an ordinance relating to the, I believe it's the West Quadrant TIF, and Councilmember Stratton is presenting that item.
Council President, I'll go first, and then you can fill in when I'm done.
I'm sorry. Say that again?
I said, I will go first, and then you listen, and you can fill in as needed.
Perfect.
Okay, so you all know, we've gone through this a few times with a lot of revisions in the ordinance. So basically, what this ordinance does, it, it extends the TIF from 2032, it extends it to 2047. If the extension is approved, the Kendall Yards subarea portion of those revenues will be directed to West Central for neighborhood enhancements, infrastructure. We also, in this ordinance, we have defined, we use terms to define low income and affordability. Beginning in 2032, 50% of the funds in the TIF can be used for affordable housing. We have also reverted to the statutory definitions of permanent, which is a 40-year affordability requirement for multifamily rentals, and a 25-year affordability for single-family-owned units. We will be having a study session on Thursday, because council has submitted some questions. I've talked in, Council President and I have been talking to folks. This afternoon, we sent out two documents. We sent a Q and A that I've been working on as questions come up to answer some of the concerns. And then I also sent a document from our December 9th, 2019 Urban Experience Committee Hearing, and this was information that was presented then. So go ahead and look through it, get your questions ready. I know there have been concerns about some folks wanting to only extend 10 years, some want to put a cap on how much can be held in the TIF. Hopefully, we provided answers in the attachments that we sent you and the documents we sent you today, but I would, I would ask that you remember that the law allows a TIF to be terminated when it is no longer necessary, and that is in your Q and A documents. So go ahead and go through that information, and we'll be ready to talk with folks on Thursday at study session. And I'll turn it to CP Banks.
Yeah, I was just going to mention that the, the spending in TIF after 2032 can go throughout the West Quadrant TIF except for Kendall Yards, so there's portions of it that are Riverside on the North Bank and Emerson Garfield, essentially kind of up the Monroe Street corridor that could accept some housing. And money could be spent in Kendall Yards, but only for affordable housing. And as Councilmember Stratton said, it is being extended to 2047, but the city council can terminate it at any time, assuming all bond obligations are satisfied. And the other question that we wrestled with a little bit last meeting on this was the counties' share. They get a portion, I think they get 30% of the TIF revenues outside of the Kendall Yards area, but any money they get, they have to spend inside the TIF, which should benefit city folks. But, but hopefully on Thursday, there's a few questions. Tim Donovan put together an elaborate spreadsheet, which I couldn't understand exactly, and he want, he was going to present it at Finance today, but he needs a little more information, so we've asked him to come Thursday and share with us that, and we've asked the proponents of the extension to give them a little time on Thursday as well to tell us why they think it's a good idea. And the part of the process-
And I would-
I was just going to say, in the TIF statute requires that we give written notice to the neighborhoods and hold this hearing, and the written notice for next Monday's hearing has been posted.
Sorry, I didn't want to interrupt you.
Yeah.
But I did want to add that the West Central Neighborhood, West Central Neighborhood, Emerson Garfield Neighborhood, and the Riverside Neighborhood Council have all been, presented information and presentations, and they support this, as we're also hearing from other businesses that support it as well. So it's a good way to, especially for, for low-income areas, to build up the infrastructure, get people doing business and building homes in those neighborhoods. So I just wanted to add that.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Kinnear?
Thank you. So I, I understand, and I heard what you said about being able to cancel at any time, but the caveat to that is if all bond obligations are met, and so that to me isn't just a little piece, that is a big chunk of what we need to consider. Yes, it can be canceled at any time, or we can stop it at any time, but I've heard that folks want to bond off this. That is a whole different scenario that we have to be aware of.
Yeah, I would just say, any bonding decision would have to come to council to do that, so that would have to take that into account, that that would be, it depends how much the bonds are, but that could limit that if a future council bonded, so. Anything else? All right, so let's talk about this on Thursday.
And then lastly, will be the setting of a public hearing before the city council on possible revenue sources for the 2021 budget.
All right, that brings us to the end of the advanced agenda, which is going to be busy. Is there a motion to approve the advanced agenda?
移到 2nd.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving it indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed nay? Any abstentions? All right, the advanced agenda is approved. That brings us to tonight's agenda, and there were a couple of requests to add items. Most importantly, there is a request to add CARES Act contract extensions at item eight, a little over a million dollars for small business and nonprofit grants administered by GEO CKO, $200,000 in additional landlord and tenant assistance Spokane Workforce Council, and $225,000 in increased childcare assistance to facilities and families. So those are all current contracts we have, and we're just adding some of the additional money we have. We have additional money beyond that, which we haven't figured out how we're allocating yet. But is there a motion to suspend the council rules?
移到 2nd.
Okay. There's a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Any discussion? All right, hearing and seeing none. All those in favor of suspending the council rules indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed nay? Any abstentions? All right, the rules are now suspended. Now, is there a motion to add item eight, OPR 2020-0663, to today's consent agenda?
移到 2nd.
Okay. Okay. All right, any discussion? And again, that's those CARES grants allocations. All right, hearing and seeing none. All those in favor of adding that matter to our consent agenda indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed nay? Abstentions? All right, that's added. And then-
Council President?
Yes.
Yeah, I would make a motion to defer number four on our consent agenda until November 2nd.
Okay. So that's the community grant award?
Correct.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Is there anyone on staff that can report as to what impact, if any, deferring this would have? Yep. So if you're a staff member-
I'm pretty sure last week we discussed this, that it would, I mean, Francis is here, but I think he said that it would delay us hiring somebody, but go ahead, Francis.
Yeah, thank you. Council President, am I recognized? Thank you.
You are.
Thank you. I'm, I'm wondering what the delay, if the delay is because of the issues with the site. I, like we said last week, the, there is, the accepting the grant has little or no basis, has little or no relation with the site location. And the community advisory board charged with hiring the social service navigator that will be taxed with getting services to our community in this grant, met today and started work led by Mr. Market Brown. They started work on this today, and delay, delaying the grant would impair the opportunity of the community to be able to move forward in getting the social service navigator. So I'm kind of confused with regards to the basis for the continuance.
Yeah, I, I guess I would say I'm, I'm also confused, just because if, if we're in a rush, I would think there'd be a job description ready to go for this individual that would be hired, and I know we, we made a request last week for that, and we're told that the job description doesn't yet exist. So I guess I don't see the urgency on either side, and I, I want to make sure that we're taking our time, being thoughtful, meeting with all those involved, and making the absolute best decision, and I, I don't think deferring two weeks is going to harm your guys' ability to move forward.
It does, it does harm our ability to be able to move forward, because if you don't accept the grant- It does harm our ability to be able to move forward, because if we don't accept the grant, how can we begin to, we have a job description that we have put in place, but we cannot put that in the market. We cannot put that, everything that you receive is a public disclosure. You as a body, you receive everything is a public disclosure. We can't put that out when we don't have the funding, when we, when we are not guaranteed that we, the funding is going to be received. If you want to move the court to any place in the city, you have the power to be able to pass ordinance to do that. But to refuse to accept funding for my community, for something that will benefit my community, is really, for the, for the council to
Francis?
Make a decision on whether they're going to receive the funding, it's really, it's bashing.
Francis? We're utilizing you for information only, not advocacy, so, so, but thank you. So if I understand, your point is that they're constrained on advertising for the job and distributing the job description until the grant is accepted. So that's the information you provided us. I understand, Mr., Councilmember Cathcart? Wondering why we haven't seen a copy of it yet? So that's fine. Other councilmember commentary? I'll just say that I, again, I think the grant doesn't specify what location it's going to be at. I would, I'm going to vote against the deferral, just so that we approve and know the money's coming, and then we can work on where the location is. And I'm open to whatever location works, and I've requested and got the agreement of Lonnie Mitchell to facilitate a group conversation of those interested in talking about location and any other related items. Any other conversa, any other comments or questions? Councilmember Wilkerson?
Council President, I do welcome the communication that will be led by Lonnie Mitchell. However, I really like that to happen, so we are all in agreement, and that just improves the communication for the whole community going forward. And that's why I support the two-year program.
Okay. All right, any other comments? All right. Let's be particularly deliberate in our voice votes on it. This is a voice vote thing, and I'll just ask for division if we need it. But all those, and maybe you can say it and wave your hand at me at the same time, if you're in favor of the motion for a two-week deferral of this consent item, please say aye and wave your hand at me.
Aye.
Aye.
All right. And if you are opposed, wave your hand and say nay.
Nay.
Okay. So the ayes have it. It is deferred until November 2nd.
Council President?
Yes.
I guess I would then also make a motion to defer the special budget ordinance 35957 until the same date.
Okay. There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any other additional conversation? Okay. All those in favor of deferring 35957, the accompanying special budget ordinance to the grant acceptance, indicate by saying aye.
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 Okay, I think that was four ayes. And those opposed nay?
Nay.
Nay. Okay, same vote, four to two. All right. Well, we'll see everyone on November 2nd on that. Let's see. I don't think I have any other, oh, wait, no, I have one. There is a motion to add to this agenda special budget ordinance C35958, which would allow for the acceptance of the DUI candidate court grant of $63,000 from the Department of Transportation.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion about adding that special budget ordinance? All right. Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor of adding that matter to tonight's legislative agenda indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed nay? Okay, any abstentions? All right, that's added to tonight. There's a few others that were added earlier, so we don't have to vote on them. So I think that brings us to the consent agenda less item four.
Excuse me, Council President Bakes.
Yeah.
Did you want to request motion to substitute Resolution 2020-74, or wait till the second to do that?
I do want to do that. Can you remind me again what the substitution of that one was? What's the?
Mike Piccolo reviewed the ord, or the resolution and had some updates to make to it, and so.
Do you know if he circulated it or not?
Yes.
Okay.
And I did too, yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you. So, and that's just for 74?
Yes.
Okay. So Hannah Lee circulated some updates to Resolution 2020-0074 regarding the, oh, the planning commission's 2020 to 2021 work program, and, nope. Sorry. Sorry, totally wrong. It's
For the bid.
Bid assessment rate. So, yep, sorry about that. And so there is a request to substitute what was circulated, and I'm looking for a motion to that effect.
So moved.
Is there a second? All right. I can second if no one else does. Any discussion regarding the substitution? Okay, hearing and seeing none. All those in favor of substituting the new version as circulated previously, indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed nay? Any abstentions? All right, that has been substituted. All right, now we're at the consent agenda. Madam Clerk.
Reports, contracts, and claims. Number one, contract amendment for number two with Systems and Software Incorporated, Winaski, Vermont. For utility information system support and maintenance through June 3, 2021, $319,812.50, including tax. Item number two, contract amendment with Stan Tech Consulting Services Incorporated, Spokane, for the yard grant writing and technical assistance for U.S. EPA Brownfield Grants, increase of $10,000 paid by an Environmental Protection Agency grant. Item number three, grant extension from Washington Traffic Safety Commission for DUI Court, $63,000 revenue relates to special budget ordinance C35958, which we considered during the 6:00 p.m. legislative session. Item number four is deferred to November 2, 2020 agenda. Item number five, report of the mayor of pending claims and payments approved through obligations, including those of Parks and Library through November 9, 2020, total $10,781,450.89. With Parks and Library claims approved by the respective boards, warrants excluding Parks and Library total $8,235,890.55. Item number six, city council meeting minutes for October 5, 2020. Item number seven, setting a public hearing for possible revenue sources for the 2021 budget on October 26, 2020. Item number eight, contract extensions for CARES Act-funded services to November 16, 2020, with A, GEO CKO, $1,039,100, B, Spokane Workforce Council, $200,000, and C, Community-Minded Enterprises, $225,000.
All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as read indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed nay? Any abstentions? All right, consent agenda is approved as read. We have a executive session, our normal quarterly review of litigation matters. And Council, City Attorney Ormsby, how long do you think? Do you think we'll be done by five on that? Or Mr. Piccolo?
Yes, Council President, I'm sorry. Yeah, we should be done by five.
Okay. Then let's adjourn to executive session, and Ms. Allers, are you sending us call-in information? Okay. All right. So again, we will leave the TV5 feed going, and I'll check back at 5:00 and either extend it or adjourn at that time. But every, we're not anticipating any further action. And so councilmembers, go ahead and call into the alternative line. All right, we just finished our executive session, and that is going to bring us to the end of our briefing session that started at 3:30. Again, we haven't taken any further action. We'll see you at our 6:00 p.m. meeting. This meeting is adjourned.